Again, despite the fact that the Crystal Geyser Bottling Plant is a county project and a regional water quality control board project, they have agreed to meet with the Mount Shasta City Council and citizens. And we continue to work on our phase of the project being the water connection upgrades. So with that, I thought it might be helpful to give that sort of information update to those who are present and those who may be watching. And maybe that'll save us a little bit of time here on the public comment. Who is here tonight who hasn't spoken on Crystal Geyser before? All right, Louis, why don't we start with you?
Hello, testing, is it on? My name's Louis Elbinger, I live at 712 Om Shastapath in Mount Shasta. And I expected that lots and lots of people would already have spoken about this, so I could just build on and say, yeah, me too, but since I'm first, there's just three things that I want to say. I'm a retired federal officer, so I've been in the seats that you gentlemen are in, and I understand the problems and the difficulties of juggling the different interests that people are being presented with. But I'm speaking strongly in favor of the EIR, because I think anyone who breathes air and drinks water and eats food should be concerned about the environment. There's just three points I want to make. First of all, bureaucracy can slow things down. I appreciate what you said, Tim, about the progress that you're making toward bringing this subject to a broader audience. That's a good thing. But bureaucracy can slow things down, I know this from personal experience, and I want everybody to be aware of that, that I wouldn't want to see the debate or the slowdown by that. Secondly, there's something called the appearance of impropriety. It's very important for public officials to avoid impropriety, but also to avoid the appearance of impropriety. And as I filed this issue in the paper, which you've kind of recapped, it made me, I was thinking, gee, I wonder if somebody could be paid off by Crystal Geyser to delay things and to slow things down. So I bring that to your attention, that people might be viewing it through that lens. And we need to avoid the appearance of impropriety as well as that. And the last point is to remind everyone that our constitution has its roots, a lot of the roots are in the Iroquois Confederacy, the ideas that the Iroquois had about how people should get together and make decisions. One of the ideas that did not really make it into the constitution, but should, in my opinion, is the idea that in our every deliberation, we should take into consideration the effects on the seventh generation. And that's what I want to speak out for today. I want to know that in seven generations, this place will be as pristine and as beautiful as it is today. Thank you very much for your service.
All right, I know that we have strong sentiments, and again, I'm going to ask you to hold the applause and hold the boos. And let's give everybody an opportunity to talk and move forward. Captain Mack, are you here?
Yeah. I'll be there a couple of days. I don't have all my facts together, this is the first time I've been here on the Crystal Geyser thing. I do have quite a bit to say, and I know we don't have enough time, but I want to make sure that I have, the information that I have is true. One thing it is true, we don't have the water. It's not here. And another thing, the county, we, our city isn't going to prosper by this water company opening, the county will. And how come we don't have an environmental impact report? So I'll get the rest of my stuff together, and I'll be here next meeting.
Okay, and hopefully on March 24th.
I'll probably have to have some help. So, thank you.
All right, thanks, Captain Mack. Captain Mack, and, Captain Mack, what's your address?
1531 Island Drive.
Thank you. All right, who else is on this list that hasn't spoken on Crystal Geyser matter before? All right, come on up. David Kasepear. 2338 Jake's Place.
No.
No?
David, wait, you've got to have this right. How do you do this? David Kasepear, 2338 Jake's Place. Is that it? Yeah, that's right.
Thanks, David. Go ahead.
Good turnout, thank you. These don't work. We are in a state of emergency, drought, declared by our governor. We are in our seventh year of ongoing drought. We already have a bottled water plant in weed, Crystal Geyser Roxanne. That is enough. We, the people, do not want another bottled water plant in Mount Shasta, based on the fact that we are in a crisis situation of drought, and the fact that the bottled water industry has a horrible track record. Please read the book Bottle Mania for the evidence, probably why the people of Orland said no to a bottled water plant.
Yes, come on up. Wow. Visual aid.
Yeah, you'll have to forgive me for the 1960's PowerPoint presentation.
Okay, before you start your 1960's presentation.
My name is Kate Corbell. I live at 1633 Grant Road. So I'm just a little bit confused. I just put this together this evening, these are from the last three newspapers from Mount Shasta. Dry snowpack reflects on growing doubt, ongoing drought. Governor allocations are stark reminder. USDA offers funding for water conservation. Siskiyou businesses are eligible for drought disaster loans. Supervisors proclaim extreme drought. Supervisors won't participate in Crystal Geyser Forum. Highway signs urge drivers to save water. Simple solutions for us, the people, to conserve water in our homes. Fish and game curtails angling in some places due to drought. County says it can't require an EIR for Crystal Geyser project. There's something the matter with this picture. A volcanic hydrologist did a presentation at the museum, I was not able to be there, how many of you were? Yay! How many of our supervisors were? That's what I thought. Anyway, I think it's very irresponsible for our supervisors, and I recognize you cannot control them, but I think it's very important that we address these issues. The whole state, the governor, and all the rest of us are being asked to conserve our water, and the water that's right here, even though it's in the county, it affects all of us in the entire region and everybody downstream. And so I really urge that we take this up and that it be considered. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Kate. Robert Blankenship.
Yes, sir. I have--
From Long Beach, California.
I have a place in the area, but I am a longtime lifelong Dodger fan from Long Beach, so. It's quiet. And I just brought in, I'm an environmental consultant, I have a bachelor's degree in biology and chemistry from Cal State Long Beach, and professional certification from UC Irvine in site assessment and remediation and environmental auditing. So I do a quite bit of work with different regional water quality control boards throughout the, in different parts of California. Took a look at the waste discharge requirements for, well, it's not for Crystal Geyser, but it was for the Danan Plant, okay? And what they did, and I think you may have copies of this in front of you now.
Well, not in front of us, probably, but--
Oh, okay.
We have all received that.
Okay. But the, so the regional water quality control board, like you said, generated monitoring requirements for effluent that was discharged from the Danan Plant. And there was two waste streams, they broke it up into, would be going to the city sanitary sewer, and then, I guess, the sanitary sewer at some point was overwhelmed, and, or you could see the overwhelm coming, so they broke up to where they would discharge some of the wastewater into a leach field by the plant. And when an entity applies for that, then they have to talk to the regional water quality control board, they have to characterize their waste, they take samples of that waste, they have it analyzed, they submit it to the water board, and the water board gives them requirements for monitoring, okay? There's a page here, you'll see it's got effluent monitoring, and they have different requirements for it. When you characterize a waste like that, you try to look at what the process is, okay? You try to look, okay, what are they, we've got this effluent, which is this fresh, clean, beautiful water, what are they using that water for, and then that kind of dictates what we would monitor for in the effluent, okay? And so they came up with a monitoring plan, the monitoring plan's got intervals, in other words, how often will you monitor it, how often will you sample it? And then they've also have the different compounds or constituents that you look for. And from the regional water quality control board, they generated a monitoring plan where they monitor for, the primary ones are metals and organ, they call it organics, organic solvents. You know, when we extrude plastics, you may use a solvent to thin it out, so you can blow up and make a bottle out of it and so forth. For the metals and the organics, the volatile organic compounds, the sampling frequency that they, that the regional water board gave Danan was on an annual basis, okay? So in other words, they would take, they would discharge water every day from, into the leach field, that leach field will go into the groundwater, okay, which is used as a drinking water aquifer by many of the people in this room. And the sampling interval was one sample per year, and the amount of water that they projected to discharge was 16 million gallons into the aquifer, and they would test it for, once a year, on an annual basis, to see if there was any pollutants in it. The other sheet that I gave, I believe the second, city clerk--
Is that time?
Shows the analysis, okay, the initial analysis that Danan submitted. In other words, you know, they would take a water sample, they'd say, okay, here's what we're discharging, I'm about out of it. Okay, that sample showed that there was acetone or fingernail polish in the water that was being discharged into the aquifer. So I would encourage you to rigidly, aggressively pursue the regional water board updating the waste discharge requirements. So, thank you.
All right, all right, thanks, Robert.
This is Alex Lindblum, and I'm a new resident, I live at 311B Old McLeod Road. I came tonight because I heard about this water issue after finding out that Crystal Geyser was coming to town. The fact that I moved here for the water, and this is happening now, it's a bit preposterous to me that the regional water board or that the county would allow this, because the city drinks out of this aquifer. And what the last gentleman said is completely true. What have they done, what are they going to do to keep this from becoming a huge problem for us? And the fact that it is a drought, the fact that I moved here for the water and this is happening, I don't think is any surprise to me, but it's a surprise to me that there's not more being done by the people in power to go after an EIR. And I would strongly suggest that anyone with the power to make the regional water board go forward with, as you said, they're the only ones that can order the review, please strongly urge them to review this. It's very, very important. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Alex.
My name's Alex Hoekstrom, and we're at 814 Ski Village Drive, and also 834 Ski Village Drive. And I know we live in the county, and we also understand the city council's position or their abilities, limited abilities in this, you know, the Geyser Plant, Crystal Geyser water issue, but I do want to express my gratitude for how much you have done and your efforts to create the forum that's up and coming. And I'm sorry to hear the supervisors still want to participate in such a, you know, tight-knit community. So thank you very much. Anyway, I just wanted to share, we've been participating in the Mount Shasta Big Springs groundwater elevation survey. Basically, we're testing our wells to get some data before this thing fires back up again. And I just wanted to share, so when we were looking to purchase the second parcel, this was 2002, the realtor advertised that there was a 90-foot developed well on the property, fully cased and everything, but they had no data because it was never pumped, there was never a pump in it. So we negotiated with them, and one of the things we did was have a well test, so it turned out that the well was completely dry, there was no water in it at all. So we still purchased the property, and then in 2007, we came in and drilled a new well, actually five, we just moved over five feet and drilled the exact same spot, and we hit the static water at 105 feet. So it always kind of perplexed me why this landowner would have bothered, you know, casing a well, developing this whole well, and then falling short, you know, by that much. If you consider the pump depth and the perforations, they were off by about, you know, 20, 25 feet. So we had our water at 105, you know, it's been very dependable in our other well, but because of this new concern, we participated in the project, and actually, a little bit to our alarm, our static level is now 123 and a half. So since 2007, this well has actually dropped nearly 20 feet, and it's not our principal well, it's basically a backup well. But if you go back, so it finally dawned on me that this original well at 90 feet wasn't dry when the people drilled it and developed it. I mean, they wouldn't have been that, you know, shortsighted anyway, so, you know, we have no records of it, they couldn't find any well logs, but considering that it was cased and everything, I'm kind of seeing the little pattern here that, presuming that maybe they had water at 80 feet or 75 feet at that time, we're actually seeing now a discrepancy of about 45 feet in the groundwater elevation. So that's actually a considerable percentage of the depth of the well itself. So we don't know what that means, hydrologists, geologists, geotecs have no idea how the aquifers really work. So just for ourselves and neighborhood, we'd like to resume these tests, and we're just really asking for accountability in this situation by the county itself and by the companies that are coming to propose to pull the water. So thank you for what you're doing, we really appreciate it.
All right, thanks, Alex. All right, get your name and address, and then we can get to the repeaters.
Good evening, thank you all for coming, thank you all for being here and doing an incredible job to shape all of this. My name is Bella Watson, I am living at 205 McLeod Avenue.
And for the clerk, you may want to spell your name.
B-E-L-A-W-A-T-S-O-N. I guess primarily I'm really wanting to be another voice of action and standing for having the EIR, and I'm wondering if the only way to go about this is through usual action, meaning if there's not funding or there's a challenge with this particular group doing it, is it possible for us to have another group do it? Because the need of the community and the desire of the community, regardless of opinions or the way that we're expressing it, is clearly to have some solid foundation to feel safe, and the community is not feeling safe right now. So I'm curious more, I have a question, and is there another way that we can go about finding out specifics about this, even if it isn't through the typical and normal route? That's what I'm asking.
Thank you, and you may want to talk with Robert Blankenship, it sounds like he's got a very good background in this, and can maybe give some insight.
And would the city be able to fund someone privately to do that, like him?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear.
Would the city be able to fund someone privately to go that direction?
Well, the city is funding our own study in relation to what we are doing. I don't know that the city can fund something that might involve the regional water quality control board, but all these folks who are here tonight could contact the regional water quality control board, because they did the environmental review in 2001. And if they are going to do, because they were the lead agency in 2001, they presumably are still in that position if they intend to do any further environmental review.
So if I understood you correctly, originally when you were speaking this evening, was that the Central Valley? And that could be a way for us to have it go, have it under, I think you used the word discretionary action?
Once, once an agency has taken discretionary action in terms of issuing a permit or issuing an order authorizing certain action, it need not take any further environmental review because it has already performed the environmental review that's required by law.
But we could ask for that.
But, but if there have been substantial change of circumstances, that agency in its discretion can choose to have further review.
Thank you.
It can do what's called a supplemental or subsequent review, or it could issue a notice of determination.
What was the last word you said?
Notice of determination.
Notice.
But it would be, if they're going to do anything, if they were going to review further, it would be a supplemental review or a subsequent review, or they could issue a notice of determination saying, we looked at the issue, we don't think there's anything further that needs to be done, anything different.
Thank you so much.
All right.
Daniel Axelrod in the Hammond Ranch area. The county planning director recently issued a document to debunk the misperceptions about the CG Bottling Plant. It's remarkably similar to the earlier statements from the CG Public Relations people. But the CGPR, or the county planners, it's hard to tell the difference on this issue, create several misperceptions of their own. First, they claim that this operation is non-discretionary because it's just a reopening of the Danan Coca-Cola, so it needs no new approvals. But this plant will do many new things. It bottles fruit juices, not just water. It washes equipment with toxic parasitic acid. It molds its own plastic bottles. It will install entirely new production facilities in the old building shell, and it will install new technology they claim to have just identified since last year. The huge amount of water they proposed to suck from the aquifer keeps changing with the date of their statements, but the figures, whichever ones are true, have no cap. CG says a third production line is no longer planned, but what is to stop them from planning it next year? CG refuses to say exactly what they will do, or to say what is the new technology, or to submit to an independent EIR, or to cap the maximum allowable usage, or to allow any verification. Their only response is, trust us, we will be good neighbors, which is exactly what PR people always say. Second, they say that Danan once tested the wells and saw no problems. Did they actually check for dropping water levels, for changes in water quality, for flow diversion, for recharge rates? For how long did they test? What season? Was it in a drought? That's another new thing now. CG again says, trust us, that their usage can easily be handled by the available supply. How do they know that? A relevant scientific study of Mount Shasta hydrology has never been done. In the newspaper, CG refers to a mystery hydrogeology report. Won't they share that with us? CG's PR people are not hydrology experts, they are professional BSers. They basically do not know what they are talking about, but they want us to trust them anyway. So until CG and their state secessionist county government friends finally agree to a proper state-approved scientific EIR, it's up to the locals to take a stand. The city council could analyze each aspect of this project under its purview, fire and hazardous industrial explosion potential and response, truck traffic and diesel pollution and noise and plastic fumes, sewage disposal, toxics spillage, before allowing it, all the while while demanding a real EIR on the whole project. And this all goes to the heart of a bigger issue. In a democracy, the people of this community deserve a say on what a major multinational corporation can and cannot do with all its money and ability to suck out local resources while swaying local politicians and spinning all of us.
All right, thank you, Daniel.
Barbara Coulter, 736 Pine Ridge Avenue.
Barbara, wait, just a moment. Dan, before you leave, remember, we do anticipate that we will have Crystal Geyser's hydrologist here, March 24th, and perhaps engineers as well, okay? So, I'm sorry, Barbara, go ahead.
Okay, Barbara Coulter, C-O-U-L-T-E-R, 736 Pine Ridge Avenue, Mount Shasta. And I'm a licensed vocational nurse, I'd like to speak on some of the medical aspects of what we're speaking, of what we're dealing with. The current issue of Mother Jones Magazine, which is a respected magazine that does do some investigative reporting, this is the, a copy of their current thing, are any plastics safe? And they basically come down to, no, they're not. Crystal Geyser, in their article in the newspaper a couple of weeks ago, said, oh, our plastics are safe. No. If the, the industry-based investigative science says they're safe, but people who have done independent studies for many, many years have come up with hideous, horrible, just absolutely horrendous health problems from plastic. And it includes all kinds of things, but one of the big things is the fact that apart from poisons that give us cancer risk, prostate cancer risk, breast cancer risk, childhood cancer risk, it also, that just about all of them come up with a pseudoestrogen. That means that a plastic-drinking man is slowly being unmanned. This is, this particular estrogenic compound can cause BPH in males, other personal items that I won't mention here in public, that require Viagra. This is something that we're looking at, the wastewater treatment plant cannot take out, it is present in lots of water supplies elsewhere, it's been researched, the data is mentioned in this article, and where you can go to get specific data on the health issues. And what you're asking is, Crystal Geyser comes in with all these poisons directly above our water, our aquifer, which may be only 40 feet down underneath the Danan Plant, and contamination results, and it's, hey, it's there, it's there forever, the aquifer is forever. It's not going to wash out, the aquifer recharges, but what's there sits there. And, okay, that is one thing, I'll give this to the clerk so you guys can look at it, but seriously, not just for the Crystal Geyser thing, look at it for your own health benefits.
All right, Frances, you were next.
Frances Mangell, 736 Pine Ridge Avenue, Mount Shasta. The spring discharge, Big Springs, City Park, Headwater Springs, in the 1990's-- The spring discharge, Big Springs City Park Headwater Springs, in the 1990s was 40 to 50 CFS, as measured by the drop weir right there in the park. And it is now about 20 CFS. This spring discharge dropped immediately after Danan commenced pumping and has not recovered. Water level dropped about 12 inches in the pool at the park spring in 2003. This is aquifer compaction when it goes down like a rock. Now, where's this weir that they said, I mentioned that, that we're supposed to build in 2001? That has not been built yet, that's disobedience. And the difference, and we did some research on the hatchery weir, the E-Rub Trail out there, and hatchery takes 15 to 16 CFS, according to manager Brian, and according to the website, California Fish and Game, Cal Trout. You can go check it out if you want. Photographic evidence is available now at the group water site. There's seven photos and a narrative is going to be there.
Frances, it'd be easier, it'd be easier if you addressed us.
And this evidence is now proven by photographic evidence, and it is so. Skipping some stuff that has been repeated before, the trout died in Cold Creek in 2006, 2009, and I can show anyone here, including our council, where the stuff came out, where I saw it come pouring out from underneath the factory. It's in the railroad right away, just above the KOA, and you can see that brown pipe coming up, and you can see where the parasitic acid chewed the hell out of the culverts. I noticed a gentleman said that his hogstrom says it's now 123 feet. Well, the 2013 report says the aquifer in your area was 40 feet below ground surface.
Again, Frances, I'm going to ask you to speak to the council rather than to...
Okay, it was 40 feet below the ground surface, and now it's 123 feet. You know, that's kind of an interesting drop, isn't it, in the water table? And there's no question that we have looked at, and I said it before, I'm going to say it again for the camera and for the people here, we are showing new elements of aluminum, arsenic, and lead known to be in the Danan leach field. It came out of that brown pipe right below the factory, that's right there by the railroad, you can see it going right up the railroad right away. And the aluminum was there in amounts that were 540 micrograms per liter above the government requirement that shuts you down. And that was in 2009 when the plant was going strong. And it's reasonable to conclude that this aluminum, arsenic, and lead is the result of the Danan effluent, and you could smell other stuff coming out of that pipe in 2002 and 2003.
Hello, my name is Rose Taylor, and I did speak about six weeks ago, but a lot's happened since.
And Rose is at 2338 Jake's Place in Mount Shasta.
That's right. It's a beautiful place to live.
Or 2338.
I'm here to talk about our water. At the city council coffee gathering last month, citizens brought up the concerns on whether there'd be enough water for all parties concerned, including the city and its residents and the ecological systems, and the water needs of this multinational bottled water company. Especially considering that we are facing the most serious drought in our recorded history, we were told by one councilman that the drought would have no effect on the aquifer, nor would CG pumping affect local water wells. At the last week's presentation at the museum, according to the geochemist Lee Davidson, who works for Lawrence Livermore Labs, in his peer-reviewed volcanic hydrology isotope study, he proved that drought does affect the recharging of aquifers, and pumping can affect water flow in underground water systems. A man there asked him, "Why does your research differ from those of the company, the bottled water company, research?" And he said, "Because they pretty much will say whatever they need to say to get what they want." And he was very honest, because he works within that industry too, I'm sure. So I appreciated his honesty. And again, remember, it was a peer-reviewed, very well-respected research that he presented to us. And in fact, he pointed out in 1987 and 1993, California drought, there was 50% a drop in the flow of springs in all three volcanic areas of Mount Shasta, Medicine Lake, and Lassen Volcano water areas. This data coincides with Frances's work. Also, we shared, it was shared by one citizen last time the council met, he spoke on behalf of the companies, such as Crystal Geyser, when he said, "The water is everyone's water and not just Mount Shasta's." Well, apparently, according to the CEO of the world's largest water bottling company, he said, "The water is not a public right, nor does he believe it is a fundamental human right." Global Research Canada states, in a small Pakistani community where Nestle has a water bottling company, the village councillor says the children are sickened by filthy water. Who's to blame? Nestle, which dug a deep well that is depriving locals of potable water. The water is not only very dirty, but the water levels sink from 100 to 300 to 400 feet. And now the children are denied their own water. And is my time up? Okay, just wanted to leave this with you. I don't want our children to be forced to be buying bottled water from Crystal Geyser or from anyone. This water is all of our water, and I would hope that you guys would support us and not the bottled water industry. Thank you.
Thank you, Rose.
Raven Stevens, 724 Butte Avenue. A few city council meetings ago, Mayor Sterns, you said you haven't heard of any well issues that have happened over in our Gateway Neighborhood Association over by the plant. I have been feverishly hunting down and cleaning out innuendo, third-party evidence, hearsay, and all that. I've got three, I've got two to hand to you tonight of people that had well issues. Aida, who lost her use of her well just during the drought before Danan even opened in 1994. And when water levels went back to normal, her well went, she got some recharge, and her well started working again without having to re-drill, but she did have to pay an exorbitant amount for a water storage tank. And then we've got Karen and Joseph Abad, who in 2004 started experiencing severe well issues, cloudiness, you guys will have these papers too, cloudiness, discoloration, increased sediment in the tap water. They had to start using bottled water in their home because they couldn't cook or drink with it. Their dishwasher was ruined, they tried draining and flushing their water heaters, lots of work. They live from the plant, if you're facing the front doors of the plant, they live just up gradient, you know, kind of kitty quarter to the plant. And...
Up on Ski Bowl?
On Ski Village, yeah. And as soon as Coca-Cola quit pumping and left, they don't have any problems anymore. They've got beautiful, clear water. So I just wanted you guys to know that. And the last thing I want to say is, you guys have been handed a ball of crap here, okay? You guys might not have been around when Danan came in, maybe, Mayor Sterns, maybe you were around, Michael, you were around. But you know, just because one organization, say the county, doesn't want to take responsibility, it's a political football, they don't want it, you guys don't want it, you know, where does it stop? The regional quality board only picked up the effluent part because nobody in our area would take responsibility. Why are you guys here? What are you here to do? I've talked to so many laypeople, and they say, "Our government officials would not do anything that would let harm come to us or our aquifer." And they believe that. They believe in you guys. Just because it wasn't done in 98 and it wasn't done in 2001, step up! Man up, fellas, it's time. You guys got to take the lead. If you don't, we may have some other people ending up on city council. I don't know, you know, I can't run, I'm too busy with Crystal Geyser. But really, I mean, there's got to be a point at some place where we just say, "Gosh, you know, what we've done in the past was really not good enough. And now that we know better, let's do better and let's take the lead as the lead agency." The county threw you guys under the bus, I read a memo. They said they didn't want anything to do with being the lead agency. They took their line from Bill Abbott, who's a land use attorney, and he suggested to the county that you guys, that they not take the lead, that they call this a discretionary negative declaration, and that perhaps we can make the city take the lead. So they knew back in 1998 and 2001, they got the language from that attorney, Mr. Abbott, down in Sacramento, and they're using the same damn language today. And it makes me sick. And I'm not sleeping very well. So step up. Thank you.
Thanks, Raven. And Raven? Raven? You're going to make copies of those for us, so we have... Okay, great. All right, thank you.
I'm Melinda Willie, and I live in 517 Shasta Way. I first want to thank members of our community that stepped up a couple of weeks ago and were interviewed by the San Francisco Chronicle. We had a full page on the front page of the Chronicle last Wednesday about what's happening here in Mount Shasta. The Sacramento Bee picked it up on Thursday and ran it full page in the capital section. NPR in Sacramento picked it up. I also heard that Daryl Hannah tweeted about it, and that multiple newspapers around the state are picking it up. We're getting coverage. And everybody up to this point has talked about, "It's our water here in Mount Shasta." That is not true. It is the state's water. We've got people down in the Central Valley pulling up almond trees right now, not planning. This is the beginning of the Sacramento River. That land that sits above the Big Springs aquifer should never have been put in as high industrial use. That is a misuse of land over a spring. And our whole state is at the effect of what could happen up here. So there's a much more global situation going on than just here in Mount Shasta. This is for everyone. And when we stand up and we say the pledge of allegiance when we start, we say, "One nation under God." We don't say, "One nation, including a Japanese pharmaceutical company." That is just not right. There's something about doing the right thing. And when Raven said, "Our public officials need to step up to the plate," we do need to step up. There's this distrust going on right now, and we don't want to feel that way. At the last city council meeting, I specifically asked if the Crystal Geyser representatives were here, and none of you said yes. Yet Jeffrey, you know they were here, sitting in the back of the room, and you didn't answer my question. I found out the next morning. With the vice president of Crystal Geyser here, and also their PR firm, we needed full transparency when I asked that question. From having owned a PR advertising agency, I know that if two people are sitting in the back, listening to everything that's being said, they're pulling information from these meetings and what's happened in the past to spin it in the press. And when the president of Crystal Geyser was quoted in the San Francisco article on Wednesday, he said they were going to close their Bakersfield plant, and they were going to close their Calistoga plant. How many jobs do you think that's going to leave for people here in Mount Shasta? This is no longer about economics. This is about saving our water, not only for us here in Mount Shasta, but for the whole state of California. And it's very important. When Lee Davidson spoke, the hydrologist and geologist, Friday at the Sisson Museum, he talked about how people take for granted this water, they don't know where it comes from. And because a SEQA study was done in 2001, doesn't mean it's accurate now. It's almost 14 years later. We're in a different situation. We need a new report, a new review, and we need to start with a new benchmark.
Thank you, Melinda.
I usually try to come...
Mary, go ahead and state your name and address.
Mary St. Marie. I'm coming offering another point of view again, and I'm going to approach it from the point of view of purity and pollution. We're in the process of an entirely new, if anyone's following well the global news, they know that an entirely new planet is birthing. It's obvious, it doesn't matter who we are. People are speaking up everywhere, they're having a voice. We should have learned the difference between pollution and purity when we began the Industrial Everything that we bring into our community, people come here because it has pristine pure water, pristine pure air, pristine pure environment. So whatever businesses that we bring into this community, we need to make the decision. We must choose the value of purity or pollution. I'm just going to go through five quick ones. This is pure water. It was voted a couple of years ago the best water in California. I think we're the only ones that don't have to use any additives at this point. And we're allowing in this multinational company that's going to make drinks with GMO sugar, okay? We're going to allow them to pollute the soil with water waste, we're going to allow them to use chemicals in their process, we're going to allow them to pollute the air with non-stop truck noise, and we're going to allow them to use plastics. I'm going to add one more thing to what was said a moment ago about the plastics. I did an interview with the head of a recycling company and said to him, "Why don't you use plastics? Why don't you recycle plastics?" He said, "If you recycle plastic, it causes just as much pollution in the air, earth, and water as it did the first time. So why are we still doing that? And why as a community would we even consider a company like this?" Thank you.
All right, thank you, Mary. So Vicki, in all seriousness, we've been going for an hour and a half on public comment.
Thank you.
And I would appreciate your not repeating things that have already been said either tonight or previously, and you're certainly welcome to bring forth any new information or perspective.
I probably will repeat because I think it's so important to acknowledge your power. You have power. We don't want you to abrogate your responsibility. This is what the message is. All you need is just a heart, a soul, a mind. Look where we live, we live in heaven, we live in paradise. I remember attending the birthday party for Dr. Emoto from Japan when he was here. You handed him a key to the city. Whether or not you believe in his theory of the power of thought and affecting water, where, you know, 75, 80% water, whether you believe it or not, you have a crystal hanging at City Hall from Stewart Springs. We welcomed him. I had to email him and tell him, "I'm sorry, but your water is threatened by one of your own people." I don't know if he'll respond or not. When I leave to go to visit Southern California, I take three 5-gallon, three- to five-gallon jugs of water because I cannot allow myself to indulge in the water that's down there. It is so toxic. I can smell it. I'm sure that you do the same. This water has to be preserved. It is so clear and so obvious that it is impossible for me to imagine that you don't feel the power that you have to do more than the minimum, to not pass the buck to the Central Valley Water Quality Control Board. Yes, we'd like you to speak with them, but we know you have a $3 million grant hanging on this. You have every responsibility and duty to do the very best job, not just to look at the, where the lines are going, not just to look at the minimum, but to look at what is being produced in that plant and how it will affect the environment. Even at the county, Greg Plucker said, you know, it's true, after the meeting, "We have an enormous amount of heavy industry here in Mount Shasta, right around the mountain." And he said, "It's really unusual, that should never have happened." He didn't say this, but that's bad land use planning. He didn't say this, "But that's bad land use planning. We would like you to look at the general plan again." I know that we can't undo that building, which is a huge scar when you're standing up there, but he actually told me that a 200,000 square foot building, in addition to the one that's there, could legally, technically be built on that site. That's shocking to me. That's a total of 360,000 square feet. So I'm just asking you to know that when somebody like John Kennedy, who stood up here last week and said, "Oh, these people just want to keep the water," absolutely not. We want the water to continue flowing. That's what water does. It's to flow south. It's to flow into the streams and rivers. We know you know that, and we know you're awake. We just can't understand why you're not taking a strong position, why you seem to be passing the buck. It's extremely important to us that you open your eyes, awake, know what you have here, and not let a corporation come in and do all of the things that everybody else has been saying this evening. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Vicki.
Bruce Hillman from North Old Stage Road in Mount Shasta. I would like to speak, some of the comments I was gonna make have been said here earlier, so I'll eliminate those. But I would like to address your, the comment that was up from Tim earlier about, you know, the Regional Water Control Board being the lead agency. Well, that only happened because the county refused to take it up. And here is a letter that originally the county was the lead agency for the Danan plant back in 1998 and 2000. And there's a county letter that we got when we did a lot of research through the Freedom of Information. And this letter is from Wayne Virag, the Assistant Planning Director, dated February 9th, 2000, which said, "This letter is to inform you that the Siskiyou County as lead agency under the California Environmental Quality Control Act, SEQA, has determined that Danan has complied with the provisions of SEQA as outlined below." But then they started to backtrack. They wanted to get rid of this and they sort of said, "Oh, we're not really the lead agency," and they passed it off to the Regional Quality Control Board. And that's just a total abdigation of their responsibility because those people have never seen an extractive industry that they didn't like. And so I think they just wanted to get rid of it and pass it off to somebody in Sacramento and say it's their problem and that they are a couple of bureaucrats who could rubber stamp whatever the company wanted. And so I think it's, you know, it's up to us as citizens to really try and do that. And that's why we're all here tonight. It's not just, you know, we want to keep repeating this, but this is something that we're going to fight around. We need to know what that plant is going to do, what it means to our environment, and the only way that that can happen is if, by a real environmental review of the entire plant. Because it is changed from what it was when it was a water bottling plant, now it's a beverage manufacturing plant. And it's totally different type of manufacturing process. And to say, "Oh, it can be grandfathered in," makes no sense legally or morally. And that's why people are here. And the other thing I want to talk about is, when we were at this, the Board of Supervisors meeting, and this is something Vicki spoke to, Greg Plucker said, "You know, it's sort of interesting. The biggest amount of zoned heavy industry is right around Mount Shasta, you know, where their Highway 89 from McLeod hits Highway 5. There's all this heavy industry zoned." And so, you know, this is something that I think we need to take serious as a community. You know, what are the legacies of these heavy industries and the way that the, you know, different business-oriented people have stacked the zoning in this county that, you know, is not really indicative and needed anymore and is not really reflective of what we really need in this area? So I think we need to address that whole heavy industry zoning in this area also because that's what we're stuck with this plant.
All right. Thank you, Bruce.
Hi, my name is Mark Miyoshi. I'm speaking today as a representative for the One Win Two Tribe and also as a landowner. I live at 1601 Pine Grove Drive, which is just on the other side of the freeway. I learned something new tonight. Okay. I learned something new tonight, you know, Bob Langenship came up and he was talking about the possibility of the plant putting effluent into a leach field. And, you know, before, I was of course concerned about the parasitic acid and all the things that could go into the water treatment plant. But, but the possibility of things going into the leach field and being injected into the aquifer at such a shallow depth and just brings a more immediacy to me, to you too, Miro, that, because we're, we are downgrade from the plant. We're downgrade from all of those other wells that we're participating in the well monitoring program that Bob was doing. And we're not very far from there. We're not very far from those leach fields. So anything that goes into those leach fields, including untreated effluent, whatever is in that untreated effluent, is gonna reach our meadow, our wells, and it will affect us. Not only, you know, our drinking water, but we have a wet meadow there and our water is, we have actually water on the surface right now. And we're talking about water, you know, this is gonna be the same water that, that Crystal Geyser is gonna be pumping out and also putting in, putting into the ground. So that's a major concern. And the other thing, you know, I just want to say is that nobody has really said that, talked about litigation or lawsuits, but, you know, the way things look now, you know, things are gonna wind up in the courts. And I appreciate what you said, Tim, about stating the county's position as far as, you know, ministerial versus discretionary and that issue. But it's interesting that just last week in Stanislaus County, there was a suit filed against the Board of Supervisors, and their main, and it was concerning a well, large agricultural well. And people were concerned about what it would do to the aquifer with this much water being pumped out. And the big issue was ministerial versus discretionary. And of course, their county board of supervisors said that they were only doing ministerial duties there. So that being the case, what I wanna, I'd like to ask what the city would be doing if, you know, this whole issue went to court. And, you know, if it goes to court, and you know, I don't, I don't know. I've been involved in lawsuits that have lasted, dragged on for years and years and years. So that's something I think that, you know, maybe the city needs to, needs to figure out and give us an answer to. Thank you.
Thanks, Mark.
I'm Jennifer Matthews, and I live on Holiday Lane. And I just wanted to say that it's obvious that we're, people are here to call on your support, but maybe what's less obvious, and I hope this is obvious too, is to invite you to call on our support. So when I hear people, you know, the kind of the tension gets higher and higher and all of that, it's like, I just want to make sure you know that, I mean, the amount of intelligence, both yours and everyone in this room, and the ripples from there that you can draw upon, for those of us who are interested in this issue, to stand behind you and to help you do the work and research with so many people in this room have been doing, is really outstanding to me. So please, please just remember that you can call on us. And since you obviously know most people by first name anyway, you know who we are, and we're here to back you up too in standing up for this issue. So, thank you.
Thanks, Jen.
Marilyn Taylor, 182C Shasta Avenue. I didn't sign up to speak tonight, but while I was sitting, listening, I had a flashback of that Regional Water Quality Control Board meeting, 2001, I guess it was. And my memory may not be crystal clear about it, but what I do remember is that a group of our citizens had prepared a very detailed document for their perusal to inform them of all the information we had at that time. And it had put it into them several days in advance, and even I think they called that morning to find out if it had been distributed. Well, it wasn't even distributed until after the members of the board sat down. So here they had this thick document, and they were just saying, "Well, I guess so." And so we can't turn it over to other people. If we care about our area, we have to take responsibility.
All right. Bea?
Bela. Bela Greenspoon, 724 Butte Avenue. It's about discretionary versus ministerial. The Crystal Geyser applied for a boundary line adjustment, and I believe that that would have to trigger an EIR, a SEQA EIR. So, so that's something that I know to be true. So I'm not sure why that's not being factored in. Thank you.
GT, AKA My Name Is Gentle Thunder. Thank you, Mayor Sterns. I live at 3717 Summit Drive. Thank you. I want you to know that you've been heard earlier in saying that you are putting this on the agenda for March 24th. So I want to acknowledge, even though there was some requests to do so tonight, that I want you to know we've heard that you actually have done that, that you are listening to your people and you are doing your process, and that's the soonest that you could get it on the agenda. I also want to recognize that you're managing a group of repeaters, as you called us earlier tonight, those, those who've never spoke before, those who are speaking with new information who have spoken before, and then the repeaters. And I just want to acknowledge that there's been applause, even though you've asked for no applause except at a theater or a music event. You know, at my music events, I invite people to do this and not applaud. But you also asked for the energetics of representatives with the mass, you know, acknowledgement. And I think applause is the most common way for the people to not have everybody get up and say more of the same. So just really, I want to acknowledge that, that there's, there's a dialogue that needs to be happening here in, in the old way of the council, if you will, all voices being heard. And that it's important to have us as a people acknowledge that you live here too, and you're not, Jeffrey, you told me last council meeting, you guys aren't stupid. You're, this is your home too. You're not gonna give away or do something at the detriment of the water. We are in a position that the Siskiyou County Board of Supervisors said very matter-of-factly what I read in the paper. "We're done. We're not doing any IR. We're not meeting at a forum. We are complete. End of issue. Moving forward. Full steam ahead." That's not your experience. Because here we are, the people. And we will keep coming back and keep wanting to bring the voices of the people. Because I think she said it well, we don't feel safe. And all we want is to know what we're getting into 13 years later. That's very different, that a shell of a building that used to be a bottling plant is going to be redesigned into something new. And we want to go in as wise people. You guys are here being wise people. Thank you. I really acknowledge your service, and I really acknowledge the resources that are out here. So if we, if we work together so that it doesn't have to become the us and them thing, I think we all want to work together and that we're gonna keep coming back in whatever way is needed to find a balance point, to find a balance point. If Crystal Geyser wants to be a good community member, then they'll do what's needed to get the information because they're not afraid of it. So we're in this together. Thank you all. I'm so grateful, and I know that there's a lot of energy that's being shot your way. So thanks for handling it again and again and again.